Commissioner Barth is going to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 14th meeting of the Minnehaha County Commissioners, Minnehaha County Commission, and I remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the desk by Commissioner Kelly, and if you need any listening devices, you can contact Robert, who's running across the back of the room. That will begin.
Routine business, item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 7th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number three are bills to be paid in the amount of $513,258.11.
A motion for the bills.
Move the bills.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just would comment that there are two dump truck bodies for the Highway Department at $150,000, and we have two funerals that cost between them just under $5,000.
Any other comments? A motion and a second on the bills for $513,258.11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number four are reports. A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for December 2013, and item B is the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for December 2013. Those reports are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personal action. A is a motion to approve the routine actions.
And we have Jen, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Jen Haddix with Human Resources, and happy to answer any questions you might have about the personal actions.
Are there any discussion or questions for Jen?
I'll make the motion to approve the routine actions.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item number six are application for abatement. Kyle Hellseth.
Good morning Kyle.
Good morning Commissioners, Kyle Hellseth, Equalization Office. We bring two cleanup abatements for you this morning. The first one for the South Dakota Department of Transportation, record ID 49793, in the amount of $21.89. This was for one of the H lots that they purchased and finally got around to turning in an abatement application.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ID number 40793, property abatement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The second is for Augustana College, and this is record ID 50401. Again, a cleanup, they had purchased a few properties for their campus, it's in the amount of $1,290.28.
Any questions for Kyle?
I have a question. Kyle, are they using this, or is it just a lot that they're currently, you know, torn down and just leaving it as grass, or?
I believe it was a housing that they're tearing down, and it had been exempt before.
Any other questions?
It'll be, I imagine, next March, yeah, sometime in then, for exemption.
Any other questions for Kyle?
Move approval.
A motion and a second to approve the abatement for property ID 50401 in the amount of $1,298.28. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
There are no notices and requests today, and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you Cindy, this is on DP No. 8554, in the amount of $2,642.80. The applicant currently discovered that this lien is on file, resting against the property. She's attempting to go ahead and trying to refinance her mortgage on her home. Actually, the lien is listed in both her name and her ex-husband, they were actually divorced back in, I believe it was 1993. The liens that have been accruing against the property are actually her ex-husband's liens. Part of the submission to the county commission is in fact the divorce decree referenced in there as a stipulation, and that stipulation, the applicant's ex-husband agrees to pay any future debts that he'd be responsible for. So what I would ask the commission to do is to go ahead and release the lien against the applicant, and hold the lien against her ex-husband in the full amount. But the interesting part is that unfortunately, she really didn't fill out the, completely the compromise of lien information, there was a big NA listed behind it, and, you know, it's almost form over substance, we could definitely deny the petition just on the fact she didn't completely fill out and just attached her submissions from the court related to her divorce decree and stipulation. However, I do believe that ultimately, this is the correct resolution of it, despite the fact that she didn't submit all the necessary paperwork that this commission has asked for in our petition. So I'll make the motion, hopefully I'll get a second.
A motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Commissioner Pecas, I share your concern on that one part of that, and I plan to support the thing, but it seems like in the last year, we've had a great increase in the number of applications that aren't completely filled out, that where the full amount of paperwork hasn't been given. In the past, I mean, we had a lot more information, it seems to me, and it's just lately been trailing off.
I'd like to say that that is unique in this particular instance, but I'd have to say on par, even in the classes that I'm teaching. The students turning in work is slowly declining too, I think it's something in our culture, it's something in the water. I think we have to remind people that, you know, when we ask for information to be submitted, it really needs to be complete when it's turned in. I know that our, the auditor's office, as well as the commission office, they can, they always request this information. But just as I believe Kyle indicated, these people finally came in to get their abatement stuff turned in. I don't know what it is, but it seems to me that people seem to be getting more and more dilatory in their responses to requested information from governmental bodies or regulatory bodies, but you're absolutely right. But ultimately, are we gonna let form get in the way of substance? And I do believe that it's the right result, but I do share your concern, Commissioner Barth.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, perhaps it's, I mean, I'm not with this one, but I think somehow, the message, there should be a letter sent to these people from now on, it says if you don't have all the forms included, the application will not be considered. And, you know, until we get everything in, just have a checklist, I don't know, is this Murray or Robert, or is it the auditor's office, or?
It's our office.
It's our office.
Yeah, we complete, collect the information, or in some cases help them complete the application, but we can certainly prepare any reminder or additional encouragement to help motivate individuals to provide this information in a little more complete fashion.
Any other comments, Commissioner?
I don't know that this is a concern because of the fact that the divorce decree is really the document that is the probably most important piece of paper in this whole process, but I'm wondering if we can't just approve this based on the finalization of the application, and then we don't have to look at it again, because obviously, we're being directed by the divorce decree to make the decision that we'll make, so if we add that as an amendment, or if you want to change your motion?
Yeah, I absolutely have no leaning one way or the other, I'd be fine, I'll make a motion to amend to allow for the applicant to go ahead and have the lien removed against her, and to apply against the ex-husband after she completes all the information requested in the petition.
Second.
A motion and a second on the amendment, any other comments? So we have a poll first on the amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and we don't have to do the next one.
Yes, now we vote on the amendment.
Now we vote on the motion as amended to, do you want to read it back, since he changed it all?
The motion is to approve the request for compromise of lien upon the applicant completing the application in full.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. This is the time for, opportunity for public comment, if you have anything to speak on that is not on the agenda, this is the time to come forward. And seeing no one, we'll move on.
Regular business, item number 10 is a briefing on the 2014 commission liaison assignments, and consider a motion for county commission appointments to boards and councils. Chairman Hyber.
Okay, so I've completed the list of liaisons for positions for 2014, and they were in our packets, they're also on the end of the counter. We do have a few specific ones that need to be voted on, because there's specific requirements for special boards, so we'll just go through those, and I'll need a motion on each individual one. Did you?
You don't need a motion.
I don't need a motion on each individual one altogether. Okay, so I will read off these. The Metro Communications Council is Commissioner Benega, South Dakota Association for County Commissioners Board of Directors, and the Board of Directors and the alternate is Commissioner Benega and Commissioner Kelly. The Sioux Empire Housing Partnership is myself. The Multicultural Center Intergovernmental Board is Commissioner Barth, and CCOG UDC is Commissioner Benega. Any comments?
I think you forgot me on the Metro Communication. You said Benega, not me.
On the Metro?
Is that right?
Yeah, I've got Metro Council, I have Commissioner Kelly and Benega.
Oh, Kelly and Benega, okay.
And then I have for Multicultural Center, both Commissioner Barth and myself.
Okay.
And then for CCOG, it's Commissioner Barth, Pecas and Kelly.
And I'm just really messing up, thank you for those. I wrote my own notes, so thank you for those corrections. Any other comments?
Thankfully, you got me out of two of those that you talked about.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those commissioners to the specific boards, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 is a briefing from Minnehaha County Highway Department on vacating certain roadways within the GH Perry addition, Perry Nature area, and consider a resolution to close bridge located within the nature area. DJ Boothie.
Good morning Commissioner, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. This one is gonna be a little bit confusing. I was talking to city yesterday, and I was explaining that I could have probably written a 10-page briefing memo, but in your guys' best interest, I figured just a discussion at the meeting would probably take care of most of the questions that would arise. There's a very old structure, built in the 1800s, in the Mary Jo Arboretum, and the way that it sits right now, it is on existing right-of-way. The right-of-way was platted in the late 1800s as part of East Sioux Falls, and since that property is right-of-way, statutorily, that structure is a Minnehaha County structure. That's not the way that it has functioned, I don't know for how long, but for a very long time. That property as a whole, in that area, is the west part of the Mary Jo Arboretum, in the park that Minnehaha County maintained prior to it being Mary Jo Arboretum. And so, first what we would like to do is, well, we were notified by some people that the structure was in pretty poor shape, and we tried to do a little bit of research on the structure, and we found out that the Department of Transportation does not have this structure listed in their database, it's not an MBI database either, we don't have any record in our department of this structure even existing, and so, for all practical purposes, that structure wasn't there. We did a little bit of research for, of East Sioux Falls and the boundary information, the platwork that had been filed, and subsequent vacation of right-aways in that area, and it looked like it was the intention of people many, many, many years ago, that they wanted to vacate all the right-of-way around there, but this right-of-way, for whatever reason, was not vacated, and therefore, that bridge is still sitting in right-of-way and is our We had the bridge inspected in December by our consultant that does our annual bridge inspections, they determined at the inspection that it was unsafe, that it was not only structurally deficient, it is also functionally obsolete, it's too narrow of a structure to be really doing any repair work on it, and that the bridge should be closed that day. There was a whole bunch of snow, we had, just prior to the inspection, we had gotten a bunch of snow, and so they weren't able to perform a complete inspection, but the, just the inspection of the abutments made their decision easy to have to close the bridge. They did, however, note in their inspection documents that if we wanted them to, they would do a follow-up inspection in the spring after the deck is cleared off. I personally don't think that it's necessary, given the condition of the abutments, but they did just note that in the inspection documents. So we closed the bridge, at that time, one of our employer, two of our employees notified me that in the late 1990s, an inspection was performed on that structure, and the structure was closed by our department. And it was closed by welding a piece of guardrail on the front of the bridge, and we don't have any record of that, again, there's no project, or no bridge file in the department or at the State Department of Transportation, they don't have a file of this bridge, and so I'm not sure if there was just a, somebody was thinking of a different structure, or if there actually was a closure of this structure, and it was just now, never followed up through a resolution. Either way, we did close the structure, and we didn't bring it to the commission right-of-way because we have been researching over the last three or four weeks, what is going on here, given that it's a pretty confusing situation. And so, first today, what I would like to do is ask that you pass a resolution that closes the structure, and I'll ask for that now, and then after that, maybe we can have a discussion of what the commission may wish to do, or what some options are moving forward for that structure.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I know that our agreement with the city on this whole area there leaves the maintenance solely in the hands of the city, and so I'm not sure that, you know, we should close it or whatever, it's certainly unsafe, but it seems like to me that according to our contract, that it's the city's deal.
Do you want to respond to that?
You're right, Commissioner Barth, we do have an agreement that we have executed with the city of Sioux Falls that requires them to take, take charge of the maintenance of the, I'm gonna read specifically what it says from their agreement. Oh, I don't have that written down right here. It says that we do have charge of their pathways and the roadways within the park. I understand that as the private, if you want to call it private, property within the park, and because this vacation of the right-of-way never occurred, that is still by statute, a public right-of-way, and also by statute, since it's a public right-of-way, the structure within that right-of-way is at the charge of the highway superintendent in that county. And I personally don't feel comfortable having an agreement out there by, between two parks departments, removing my statutory authority to maintain that structure. And so I think it's the safest thing for us to go through the resolution and close the structure, and then perhaps vacate the right-of-way as maybe it was originally intended, and then that would make that property that is now currently right-of-way, actual property of the Minnehaha County, and therefore, by agreement, the duties of the city of Sioux Falls to maintain.
Commissioner Kelly?
Is this whole addition within city limits, or is it out?
It's not within the city limits of Sioux Falls.
Okay.
It was originally East Sioux Falls, and that absolved in, I think, the early 1900s, and so now it's just in the Minnehaha County.
Because it's in the county, we have responsibility for the bridge?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
To make a motion to close that bridge?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the bridge located in Perry Nature area, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My understanding is that there's one house that uses, that's part of the way they get home, but they do have a second way to get to their property.
And I think we're not quite done with discussion on this, I know planning and zoning in parks, we had some comments about moving forward, and have a meeting set for later this week, is how to deal with this road, because at this point, we could tear it down if we wanted to, or we could let the city, because all we've done is closed the bridge, we have not changed the right-of-way issue yet, so. Scott, did you want to have some comments?
Good morning, Scott Anderson from the Planning Department, also representing the Parks Department, but just to go on record, we are having a meeting on Friday, this Friday at 1:30, and that's a meeting that's gonna, going to include several city departments, county departments, the people from the Arboretum Society, or the nonprofit. The bridge, it really isn't in poor shape, and it's a good thing to close it, I don't think it's a good thing to eliminate it, because it is, it is a beautiful historic structure, I mean, it's got interesting court site abutments, I just think it needs to have, be modified, no longer vehicle, vehicular traffic, but maybe more foot traffic, and I think that's something that we can be, that we'll be discussing on Friday, what the future use of that structure is going to be. I'd be glad to answer any questions, I will just reiterate or state that that agreement, that joint cooperative agreement, it's not between two parks departments, it was between the city council and the county commission, and it was at the request of the county commission back in 2007 that we moved forward with this, because of the unfolding plans for the Arboretum and that whole area, it just was better suited, the management of that facility was better suited to fall under the city parks and the Arboretum, they were raising through a capital campaign through the chamber, a significant amount of money to do improvements out there, which they have started and have undertaken, and it's a beautiful facility, and this will just augment that, the ability for people to recreate out there. So I don't, I think there's still some useful life left of that structure, it may not be a vehicular bridge anymore, but I think there's definitely some possibility there. I'd be glad to answer any questions. If we, if we do go through a vacation, I just would indicate to the county commission that this is in the joint jurisdiction of the city and the county, so we would need to go through a formal vacation, which I'd be glad to spearhead or whatever, but we would need to publish a hearing notice, I mean, there's a few steps ahead of this, and we would have to have a, the vacation of this right-of-way would have to take place in front of the joint bodies of the city and the county commission and city council.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Kelly?
Not a question, but I would like to, we kind of, Lori Kiso's out here, and I think she handles the Arboretum, I'd like, maybe we could hear from her as to what their attitude is towards, looks like there's a lot of right-aways in there, isn't there?
Well, there's, there's the right-of-way that provides access to that, the existing sole property out there, and that goes over a very nice box culvert, so they do have access in and out of their, out of their property. The township maintains that portion of the road that goes over the box culvert, I actually think they still go over the, this part of the road too, but with where the bridge is located, or the structure that we just closed. But there is a turnaround down at the bottom, so the township is able to get their equipment turned around there. They have access in and out of there, I know there's some questions about potential, you know, two ways in and out of there, but in reality, I mean, we're talking just a short space, probably 200 feet between the two structures of that, of that, along that unnamed creek, so I have seen some significant flooding there, both structures have never been underwater to my knowledge, so I think that they're safe, I think it would take a major, major flooding event to put both of those structures underwater, and that, now I put on my hat as floodplain administrator, I think that they're pretty high, so I think we're okay.
Lori's behind her.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Lori Kiso, Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. I agree with Scott's comments, I think the bridge is historical and quite lovely, and I understand your concern for safety for travel by car or truck, however, I'm hoping that in our meeting on Friday with both the city and the county, that we will come to some decisions for its future.
Any questions for Lori?
Thank you Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you Lori. I think with that, if there's no more discussion, we will move on.
Item number 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Civil Design Inc. for construction administration for replacing the structure 50-215-010, Del Rapids Township, on 245th Street, in the amount of $31,442. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning Shannon.
Good morning Commissioner, Shannon Schultz, Senior Project Engineer, Highway Department. Before you was an agenda item, excuse me, to approve the continuation of a project that's been under design and ready to be constructed and advertised here very soon. The construction administration is $31,442, and they were the designers on the project, and again, this is, this is the bridge replacement northeast of Del Rapids, and so it has to be built in the summer while no school's in session, so that basically frames the beginning and end of construction. Appreciate your board.
Any questions for Shannon? We've been working on this one for a while. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the bridge, to sign the contract, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. The next one is also Shannon.
Item 13, consider a bid award for project MC 50-300-118-1, 484th Avenue Bridge Deck Rehabilitation. Bids open January 8th, 2014. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again Commissioners. So we had a bid advertising, and we had three bidders, the apparent low bidder is PCI Roads for $221,000, $221,457, $221,457.56. The other two bids were $251,000 and change, and $316,000, almost $317,000 by Sioux Falls Construction and Industrial Builders respectively. The bid has been authorized by the consultant of HDR, and they have an official bid tabulation included in your packet, they've signed off on it, and agreed to recommend a war to PCI.
Any questions for Shannon? This, Commissioner Barth?
Have we had PCI do other projects like this? Because I don't recall it.
Commissioner, this is the first type of project of this nature on the county road in Minnehaha County, so no, we haven't worked with them before, they have done lots of work for the Department of Transportation locally.
Thanks.
Any other questions? This is a bridge that we let bids on in last September and only got one bid, and the price was 57% higher than our engineers estimate, so it did save us quite a bit of money by waiting and rebidding this project, so.
It's only 10% over now.
Yeah.
And that 10%, we're seeing consistently through all bids for 2014, and I conjecture, but I think that's a reflection of the unknown situation with healthcare, all of our bids are higher than what our historic tabulations are telling us it should be.
Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bridge rehabilitation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is an annual review of the Minnehaha County Investment Policy and Investment Report. Pam Nelson.
Good morning Commissioners, Pam Nelson, County Treasurer's Office. I did send you a fairly lengthy report, but in, when I came, the policy, the investment policy hadn't been reviewed for 20 years, and so the auditor suggested that I might want to have a committee and look at it, and so we came up with a new policy, and the policy, in essence, our investment policy, says basically that the policy be reviewed annually, and that I'm required to report to you monthly, or to the auditor's office monthly, and I think they send you a copy of that, is my understanding, and that the most important requirements in this investment policy are basically, one, that it requires that safety and liquidity, we have to invest in, our investments all have to be in compliance with state statutes, the most important thing that they think we should consider is we should never risk our principal, so that's, I think that was also one of my most important ones. important ones. And that all the investments have to be collateralized. And that we take competitive bids before we invest any money. And so that's pretty much the heart of the policy itself. And so I would like you to approve that policy, and we stay with the one that we had. And then we gave you, I also gave you this fairly lengthy report on the investments and how much they're, we have basically $15 million invested right now. Tells you which banks they're in and how much we're earning on them. And then the other thing that our investment policy established was, it established a benchmark that we were supposed to measure our success or failure at. And I thought in the beginning that it was kind of high, but in retrospect, it was probably not as bad as I thought it would be. It's been, because we've easily exceeded it on a regular basis. If you look at the bar graph that you had, the one with the red and the blue lines, and I think it was on like the first sheet of your report, the blue one is the monthly benchmark, the monthly report, and then the end of the year reports. And it goes by month. And as you can see, we did pretty well. We exceeded the benchmark on all-the-time basis. So if there are any questions, I try to answer them.
Commissioner Pecus?
Well, and Pam, I was involved with the committee that originally established these benchmarks. And it wasn't just, for example, you and me sitting in a smoke-filled back room. We had Dana Dykhouse, I believe we had First National Bank.
Danny Otten.
Yeah, exactly. So I would have to say it was a blue-chip member panel that actually looked at this and said the T-bill would be the appropriate measure for our government. And so to back up what you were talking about, we had individuals in the banking industry in Sioux Falls sit down and volunteer their time to establish this policy. So I think Pam is not taking credit where credit's due. She's done a good job, and she's followed the policy as it was delineated.
Any other comments or questions for Pam?
I was also on that committee, and I, my only regret is that we don't have the bar graph on the screen here to show how she's exceeded the standard we're looking for consistently.
Next year.
Any other comments, questions? I need a motion to accept, oh, I don't.
Just to report.
Just to report, okay. And we will move on to number 15.
Item 15, consider a motion to approve resolutions related to the transfer of certain tax-deed properties. Bob Letts.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Letts with the Auditor's Office. And today, I'm bringing forward for your consideration a couple of resolutions. And what they would do is finalize the transfer of the tax-deed properties, one part in the city of Sioux Falls and the other part of the city of Brandon. And these are in accordance with the wishes of the deed appraisal board. I've included a copy of that appraisal board for your review as well. First resolution is to approve the transfer of the following properties that serve as drainage areas to the city of Sioux Falls, and authorize the auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties levied against the properties. Number one is RDID 79670. Number two is RDID 79671. Number three is RDID 79672. Number four is RDID 82022. Number five is RDID 82091. Number six is RDID 82092. And number seven is RDID 80266. And number eight is RDID 80227. Second resolution is to approve the transfer of the following properties that serve as drainage areas to the city of Brandon, and authorize the auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties levied against the properties. First one is RDID 75672. And the second one is RDID 75673. The action I'm asking for today is to approve the two resolutions for the transfer of the property, the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Brandon. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Auditor Letts? If not, I entertain a motion for the resolution for the first eight deeds, tax deeds for the city of Sioux Falls.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second with a comment?
Bob, can you give me the values of those eight property taxes for the city of Sioux Falls and the abatement dollar value?
You know, we talked about doing that last week, but obviously, when I put this in last week, it would have changed. Can I get back to you with that information, Commissioner?
Yeah, that's fine.
Most of these are small strips of land that serve as waterways. Are there any other comments or questions? Or a motion and a second on just the city of Sioux Falls properties? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The second one is on two tax-deed properties for the city of Brandon. Is there a motion to approve?
There is. Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions for Bob? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of four Dodge Chargers in the amount of $101,052 for the sheriff's civil division from Lamb Chevrolet in Oneida, South Dakota. Kristin Trana.
I apologize that that was listed on the agenda backwards. These Chargers are actually for the patrol division. So when you said that, I'm like, oh, wait, what have I got here? So they're actually, they're going to be patrol cruisers. So we are requesting to, we came through the budget process, we requested to get six patrol vehicles. We've decided that we will split it up as four sedan's to try and get some of those ones that are high miles off of fleet, so that we can have a little safer fleet. And then we'll get two SUVs. And I'll be bringing that to you later. Sorry to sidetrack, but we're waiting for the city bid to come through to see which one's going to do better, the city bid or the state bid on those. So. But yeah, these are all-wheel-drive Dodge Chargers purchased from state bid. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Kristin? Commissioner Barth?
So by, with the planned purchases, are we going to be on a good schedule for keeping our fleet up to date without having to buy 20 in one year?
We are trying to keep it at, even with the delay now, and a couple of years of not being able to buy patrol cars from budget, we're trying to keep it right around that six mark as far as what we had planned many years ago, prior to me working for Minnehaha County, as being a good replacement schedule. We're just trying to accommodate that. So I don't, at this point, I wouldn't anticipate that we're going to come to you and say we need to replace the whole fleet all at once.
I very much appreciate that.
Any other questions for Kristin?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve four patrol cruisers. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And then item 17 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of one Chevrolet Malibu in the amount of $18,024 for the sheriff's civil division from Wagnner Auto in Pierce, South Dakota. Kristin Trana.
This was something we also had planned for in the budget when we talked about budget last summer, was to replace one of the units that we use for serving civil papers, particularly within the city limits of Sioux Falls. And so that's why we're able to pick a little smaller vehicle with a little better gas mileage. So this one is also from state bid. Do you have any questions?
Over approval.
A motion and a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any questions or comments for Kristin? Commissioner Kelly?
The reason this is so much less than a charge is because it's not a pursuit vehicle, is that right?
Exactly. Yes, this would be like a civilian standard vehicle.
So we have a motion and a second to approve one civil division Malibu. The price is $18,027. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 18 is consider recommendation for contract award for inmate medical and detoxification services for Minnehaha County. Proposals were opened on December 6, 2013.
Hello, Jeff Ward, I'm the warden over at the jail, filling in for Ken McFarland today. As you said, these, the proposals were received and opened on December 6, and we had five vendors that had submitted proposals. The committee that reviewed the policies for the proposals scored them based on the criteria set forth in the RFP, experienced the depth of the understanding, of their understanding and the detail presented in their proposals. After that review, we interviewed two separate vendors on January 6, and are, at this point in time, able to recommend one of the vendors to receive the contract award. That recommendation would be for Armor Correctional Healthcare. They're out of Miami, Florida. The, through their proposals, the financial difference between that and the other finalists, which is correctional healthcare companies, was roughly $200,000 difference, with Armor having the lower of the two costs. The selection committee, it was a unanimous decision amongst the selection committee regarding Armor Correctional Healthcare, now that they just had a far more comprehensive understanding and detailed presentation for integrating the geo-medical and the residential detox programs. I do quickly want to point out in the briefing memo that the dollar figures that are listed in that briefing memo are estimates, and they're for comparison purposes. They are not a negotiated dollar figure. So on that, I'd like to recommend that the contract be awarded to Armor Correctional Healthcare.
Are there any questions or comments for Ward and Ward? Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I just want to thank the effort that Warden and the sheriff, and of course, Carol Muller and everybody put into this particular process. I believe last time, we only had two bidders. Obviously, we had a better response this time, and the market is actually helping us make this decision. So it'll drive down costs for Minnehaha County taxpayers. And thank you, Sheriff, and everybody that was involved, because you just saved the taxpayers a lot of money.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Barth?
Does our state's attorney have any questions on any of this contract dispute?
Not at all. In fact, you know, I looked at the process. The process complies with our bidding statutes, and I have no concerns with the award to Armor as stated.
I'd also like to echo what was just stated about, thank you to all the people who put a lot of time and effort into looking at a new company to come in and work with, our medical, inmate medical and detox. And also wanted to thank CCS for extending their contract with us until the end of February, so we could get through the RFP and all the interview process. And so Sheriff Milstead.
And I appreciate Commissioners, you know, it's a several-million-dollar contract, and it's, you know, inmate medical care is something that we take very seriously. And I think that we'll be very satisfied. And keep in mind that this is during kind of a sweeping change in how we handle the detox, and now with a sobering center and a jail infirmary and medical observation area. So we're really improving, you know, access to healthcare, I think. But we're changing the model, and we're going to have a very few number of people that will be in the true detox. And the sheriff's office now will have the drunk people that are brought in off the street on a regular basis in our care and custody, as opposed to being in detox. So it's kind of a change. And actually, you know, I was really impressed with Armor's grasp of that, of that issue, and how they've dealt with, you know, that, who they utilize for detox has a lot of experience in that area. And so I think it's going to be a good transition. It's going to be a quick transition because we're talking about, you know, in the next 45 days, probably bringing them on board. And so I would expect that as soon as we hear, if you approve this award, we're going to move forward, and we'll start phone calls and site visits, that they'll be here setting things up. They're obviously going to be looking for local employers, our local employees. You know, they don't come with a fleet of people from Miami they're going to bring up here to work in our jail. They're going to hire Sioux Falls residents, our local residents. That's the way they work, and they're in a number of facilities across America. So we'll start, if this approval starts like today, putting plans and transitional plans in place. And I do appreciate Commissioner Hybert's recognition that CCS, you know, extended, they didn't need to. They extended their contract to allow us to get this process completed. So thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments or questions? So we have before us a consideration to approve Armor Correctional Healthcare from Miami, Florida, to award the contract for the inmate medical and detox services in Minnehaha County. Do I have a motion?
You do.
I have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Get on the phone.
Item number 19 is the annual review of the Minnehaha County Facility Power Outage Response Protocols. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commissioner's Office. Back in 2011, you approved a facility power outage response protocol. And one of the elements of that protocol is an annual review of the policy. And just as a little bit of a background, this came about because we had a number of power outages at that time, where the length of the outage and the cause of the outage wasn't completely clear. And there was just a little bit of uneasiness or lack of understanding of what to do, because we didn't know exactly how long it was going to be. Do we send employees home? Do we clear the building? And so this protocol was really a response to that, to just get, get things on paper and solidify how we're going to notify, how we're going to make sure the building is secure, life safe, safety, health issues are all accounted for, understand the capabilities of the backup systems that we have in the building, and then also the notification programs, as well as stating what is going to be the employee dismissal callback program if we have a outage that lasts more than an hour. And so that is, you have the policy before you. We're not asking for any changes to the policy, but just needed to bring that for your annual review per the terms of the policy. I'm happy to review any specific elements of that policy that you would like. I would, the one thing that I would just point out is the callback provision of that, that if a outage lasts between, now I'm looking for my, that section in the.
More than one hour.
Yeah, more than, more than one hour, that employees may, may be dismissed, but if it, the power comes back on, that employees could be subject to callback to work as well. So again, no changes to the policy, but just needed to bring it for an annual review.
Any questions for Robert? No questions. Thank you.
Item number 20 is an update and status report of the 89th Legislative Session on Bills That Impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
And it is that time of year again where legislature is back in session. I believe the governor gives a state-of-state address a little later this afternoon, and they will be off and running in Pierce. As part of the, following the legislative activities, we will be giving a weekly update on bills that have the potential to impact Minnehaha County. At this point, we've got a couple of bills that I'm going to draw your attention to, but the list is fairly short right now because the bills that have been dropped at this point primarily are from some of the agencies, some of the summer studies. So a good number of bills still will, will be introduced here in the coming, coming days and weeks. I'm going to touch on a couple that I have noticed so far, and then I know Julie Risti wanted to chat with you just a little bit about some of the bills that are being brought forward by the Register of Deeds this session. And the, one of the first ones that I wanted to mention to you is House Bill 1006, an act to provide for the assessment and taxation of agricultural land based on its actual use. And just in speaking with Director of Equalization Kyle Hellset on this one, this would just add some requirements for reporting if the use of land, ag land is changed, and put some date, some date requirements in there. I know that for our office, it would, those changes aren't always reported in a timely fashion. And if it would, it's a word, definitely will be a workload issue for us if this one does go through. I think the pictometry contract that the county has been considering is intended to really alleviate some of these questions, and would give a lot of the information that might otherwise be provided by this reporting. So that's, that's one, again, just introduced. Haven't had any committee hearings yet, but that's one that we'll keep an eye on. Another one I noticed was House Bill 1018, an act to revise certain provisions regarding the record-keeping process of child welfare agencies to the Department of Social Services. And, you know, this, looking at the language definitions in this bill, and working with Deputy State's Attorney Kristin Katmeyer, this, this would involve Deputy State's Attorney Kristin Katmeyer, this would involve JDC and VOA. So, we'll, again, we'll keep an eye on it. It doesn't look like it would be a major change, but it is a reporting requirement of sharing information with the department if that information is requested. And then I know one that is not listed as a bill, but I believe it's more of a concept at this point that I believe is gaining some legs in Pennington County and has been, was shared with Chairman Hyburger, is one that would amend this particular statute, 10631.3, again, dealing with land use. And this would make it, there, from the information provided by the Pennington County Commission, this would more clearly define the criteria used for smaller parcels to be classified as agricultural for taxation purposes. And again, this is not in a bill form, or it's not in, has not been introduced, it does not have a number yet, there is some language attached to it. But my understanding in chatting with Kyle is that this really would have minimal, if any, impact on Minnehaha County. It's primarily a West River issue and would deal more with forestry uses versus agricultural uses.
I got an email. I don't know if anyone else got it, and it came from West River had put it together and then forwarded it on to the association and asked Wilcox to distribute it to all of us to get support, just because they didn't have it ready in time for our last convention. So, I forwarded it on to Kyle this morning. Any other comments, questions?
I just, I know that they, when we raised our agricultural thing from twenty to forty acres, Pennington County raised it to a hundred and sixty acres, which is the maximum. So, anybody in Pennington County that's got less than a hundred and sixty acres is not qualified as an agricultural thing unless, there's some other rules, unless they get fifty percent of their income from agriculture. And so, out there, of course, lots of people have larger acreages and caused a lot of dissension.
Commissioner Kelly?
It's interesting. I had a conversation with Kyle. Minnehaha County, I think, is second-largest in ag valuation in the state, but it's only six percent of our budget or of our revenues. Take a county like Stanley County, and it's eighty-five percent of theirs. So, our issue is not anywhere near as great as you're going to hear from those rural counties where most of their money comes from ag. And in Minnehaha County, it's a small portion of it.
Commissioner Pecos?
Well, I think it's important that counties play well with others. And, you know, when we had our association meet, we made great pains to make sure all of our information was in at the appropriate time. And some of it was debated, a lot of it didn't get past go. But now, once again, the message this sends is that if you wait to the eleventh hour and you don't put it through the association, and if the certain right people like it, it's going to be pushed at the legislature. And, you know, if you wait, you win. I have a real problem with that. We've picked our legislative horses to run. This is in the eleventh hour of the eleventh minute of the eleventh day. And I really think that if we're going to have a process to have the association go ahead and push legislation, we need to adhere to the process that was followed. Bringing this stuff up at the eleventh hour is not appropriate. And I think that we've, you know, Jeff had to go out there and testify, and we've all tried to get our ducks in a row. But, you know, the message here is wait, and you will be rewarded. So...
Additional comments?
Madam Chair, I've just come in on another part of the ag tax. You know, I found a glitch here in Minnehaha County where a farmer whose land had been submerged underwater for some years, the law states that they can't get a reduction in their property tax unless they've been cultivating that land. Yet, that same land is being taxed based on the soil type, you know, as if they're growing soybeans on it. But the fact that it's not useful for anything is, they ought to pay zero tax on it. And in fact, they're paying tax as if it was growing soybeans because of the glitch of no cultivation.
Any other comments, questions about the legislation? Thank you, Robert. Oh, did you have somebody else? Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was just going to join in with Robert here if I could just briefly. And I know I've brought this up in the past, but since we're on the verge of the legislative session, I just thought I'd bring it to the forefront. The registers of deeds across the state through the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is bringing forth the bill to attempt to pass UPIRA, which is the Uniform Real Property Electronic Recording Act. And that would simply give certain filers another option in addition to our offices recording paper documents. If they were to use what's known as a trusted submitter, they could file electronically, a document electronically. And in other words, it wouldn't be just everyone that would be able to do this. You can't sit at home and do it from your desk. You would need to go through a transmitter who is very, implements very high-security standards that make any chance for questioning the integrity of the document that's being filed electronically. So, it is a very high standard that's set. So, through the Uniform Real Property Electronic Recording Act, we hope to put South Dakota in line where most of the rest of the United States is. That's just a map I wanted to share with you. As you can see, South Dakota is in the middle there, and we're one of only seven states where no counties are doing any electronic recording whatsoever. So, we're hoping to be able to bring this forward. The Uniform Electronic Recording Act would then proceed to establish an electronic recording commission. We've been on, had a task force that's been researching and following this and actually moving forward that's consisted of registers of deeds in the state as well as title professionals and title companies and bankers, those people who are really interested in being able to do this. It is a bigger convenience for many customers. They would need to be submitting electronic documents through a bank or financial institution so that it is very highly monitored. At any rate, it is permissible, which is another very important aspect of the legislation. In other words, not every county has to do it, but if you have the ability and you wish to pursue it, you can do so. So, we just see lots of pluses with this and feel that it's a real positive move forward for counties.
Any questions for Julie? Commissioner Burr?
Julie, do you have a bill number yet on, is this...
You know, I didn't check this morning. I don't.
Okay.
I know it's ready to go, but I don't have the number.
Speaking for myself, I'd love to support the registers on this issue if we're out in Pierre.
Any other comments? Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one is Minnehaha County Commissioner Rees on reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Now, you all have your new assignments, you can go out and meet your new people. New business? Is there any new business?
You know, most of us who have been in public service for a while, very rarely do we ever get a letter from somebody that compliments one of the employees. In fact, I think it happens once or twice every three or four years. We all got a copy of a letter that was sent through City Hall about Pam Nelson's service to one of those individuals. It was very highly complimentary of the system and how long it took to get through the process. So, Pam, you deserve some accolades for that because, again, it doesn't rarely, it rarely happens that we do appreciate the ones that we do get. So, congratulations.
Thank you. And that note included more than one time coming to the office. It wasn't just a one-time thing. They've been here several times, and every time would have been excellent. So, thank you, Pam. Any other new business?
Madam Chair, just, it's like last week's business still, but on that alcohol tax issue, I got seven emails in support of raising the tax on alcohol. I got one person that emailed me with a concern that due process would not be followed before they forfeited their property. And I've been getting maybe two phone calls a day on that issue. I had one last night from a woman whose daughter and granddaughter were hit by a drunken driver while riding their motorcycle, and she said that her daughter and granddaughter helped out this drunk driver by wearing a helmet, otherwise he'd be in for murder. And it's, I was in Lakin County, by the way. But there seems to be a lot of people that see the point of making those cost causers cover the cost.
Any other comments? Any old business?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Sir Litz?
I did go downstairs and get those numbers that Commissioner Benninger was wondering about, and I'd like to read them to you right now. The total for the numbers of the eight RDIDs for the city of Sioux Falls comes to twenty-one thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and ten cents. The two properties out in Brandon total six thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. So, if we total those both up, we've got twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-eight cents worth of taxes, interest, and penalties that we will win.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Bob, and I, maybe this is more for Kyle. You knew this was coming. How can we come up with a value of property that frankly is swampland, for lack of a better term, in the assessment process to be able to use that as a piece of contentious values, so to speak? And we've talked about this before, and I know it's not an exact science in some cases, but can you just briefly talk about that? Because it happens every year.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle, Hellset, Equalization Office. To answer your question, we use a base value of a thousand dollars. And that's more for bookkeeping purposes.
Okay.
And realizing that there really, there is no desire to own the trainway. Contractors don't want it, yet we have to maintain a value on it, or it just, in essence, creates an exemption. So, we maintain a thousand dollars on. Nothing much.
Any other questions for Kyle? Any old business? Actually, I have a question for Kyle and old business. You can stay right there. Property tax notices went out on Friday, and I just wanted, mine went up significantly just because of not only the county opt-out, but my school district opt-out significantly. And I just wondered if you'd had very many phone calls or comments about what was going on.
Yes. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And yes, I had three of them yesterday. The Equalization Office forced that duty off on us.
That's because your real estate tax expert is gone.
I will have to say that I think it's helpful that it is listed now on those cards where that money is going. I don't think that was something from the past, but I could go down and see that my school district was taking X number of dollars. And if you look at those things, the county gets a very small portion of the amount of taxes that you pay. And I thought that was very interesting. So, hopefully, people read the whole card.
If I may, you know, my experience is yesterday, I think a lot of people just want to be heard and have that explained to them, and so, we go over that, and at the end of it, they're not happy about the money, but at least they understand why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
I would imagine, and we're keeping track of them, we probably fielded a hundred and fifty calls yesterday and probably fifty last week on Friday when the certain portion went out. And that's the greatest concern was the increase in taxes.
Right.
But again, it was the opt-outs in West Central. It was the opt-outs in Brandon Valley School District. And those, in essence, take about seventy percent of your taxes, so it's going to be the greatest increase.
Tri Valley, too.
Yeah, Tri Valley. So, it's part of the job. It's what we expect this time of the year.
Any other, no old business? And if that being said, we will adjourn for executive session for legal and, or personnel and legal briefing. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
A motion and a second for adjournment with executive session. Done.